Fourteenth meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin each, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Mr. Rul De Anda.
.........................................................
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the property listed in the agenda, Bridge District River Front LLC, to confer with our legal counsel regarding one case of substantial exposure litigation, no action was taken, and this is in the, as the successor agency. All right, so that brings us then to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, where the council is prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum on items that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the front door, and turn the card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the testimony on any item be limited to more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the request cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item, so once the public comment and/or those council questions have begun, we don't take any additional cards, so if you have an interest in speaking on any of the items tonight, try to get your card in as soon as you can, but certainly by the conclusion of the staff report. And then finally, we recognize that for some folks coming to the council meetings and speaking in public is not their, it's not their normal thing, and it creates a little bit of anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any moves or cat calls or even applause or other demonstration, and we just try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have no requests to speak under item 1A, so we're going to go directly at item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mayor Pro Tem Johannesen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County, or Yolo Salona Air Quality Management District met today. We, we heard a presentation on, on the ag engine registration, which is a program where depending on the horsepower of the stationary source engines, there's a registration program and also maintenance program. We also heard a presentation on AB 923, which was a 2004, was signed by Governor Schwarzenegger at that time. It's basically vehicle registration, so there's an additional $2 that goes into this pool to do, work on programs that meet, that create better equality. So we agreed to pursue two areas of incentives. One would be municipal fleets, that would be the public fleet of vehicles to create incentives to continue to retrofit those and filter those, and also to continue to provide incentives to off-road agricultural equipment. So most of the emissions in this area are from non-stationary sources, which we can't really control. The areas we can control typically are the stationary ag engines and things like that, so those two issues is it.
Mr. Kristof.
Couple, Mr. Mayor, for me. The, we met, West Sac Safka, or West Sacramento Flood Control Agency met on May 8th, and a couple of things that came up were really sort of positive, and, and I think the community needs to sort of get a little understanding. The GRR, which is the, it's a document that allows for federal participation and federal reimbursement if money's spent, but the GRR is going to be circulated in June, I believe, and that's going to be a really good thing, because the city of West Sacramento should be able to receive a favorable rating on the next WRTA that comes into, that goes to Congress next year or the year after, or whenever they can finally do it. We didn't make this year's WRTA, but we, the next one, we should be in line, and one of the requirements is a GRR, General Evaluation Report, needs to be completed, and we will have all of that done. We also received, I think, pretty good news from a PR perspective. The city of West Sacramento is going to receive a national award, and it is, it's an award for the Flood Protection Agency, using traditional citywide communications, like in our utility bills or whatever, and keeping people informed. Social media, flood preparedness, a video, matter of fact, it featured Mayor Cabaldin, and so I'd really like to thank him for doing the video, and it was, it was really pretty nice. And then, sort of a non-traditional kind of thing, but a supermarket sweep, and that was an event that was featured council member Ledesma. And really like to thank them for participating with some of the PR kinds of things that we're trying to do to educate the people and, and, and make sure that they understand that, you know, flood protection is a very, very important issue in, in West Sacramento, but, so I thought that, that was, that was pretty good. And then SAC Regional, the water sewer system, it, we met this morning, and the big project there is the ECO project. It's, it's $2 billion project, and we're starting to go out for bonding now, and I think the first phase, as far as bonding goes, is we are going to bond for the first 200 million, and, and then we'll take it from there. Everything seems to be very favorable in the bond market, so we're getting really good rates, and hopefully that can transcend later on to a rate reduction, because as I had indicated earlier, in June of this year, or July of this year, our sewer rates are going to go up $3 a person, or $3 a household. And so we just need to keep on track, make sure we're watching our pennies and doing everything we possibly can, and, but we've got a project that we have to get done. State has mandated that we do this, and, and so we've got to make sure we get this project done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof, and thanks for your continuing leadership on strengthening the, the safety for the city through our levy and, and related flood protection infrastructure, but also even, even pre-Katrina, this was one of the few cities that always has paid attention to flood protection, even when it wasn't in the news, and that's, that's a no small amount due to you being a dogged advocate on, on, on preparedness, on readiness, and on protection. So thanks for, for your leadership, and the national award news is fantastic.
Thanks for the kind words.
Dr. Ledesma.
Thank you. I have a few items to report on tonight. First of all, on Monday, the 12th, there's a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District, which I currently serve as vice chair on that, on that, on that board. There were a few items of interest, so I wanted to report back to the council. First of all, they did have an update on the Fix 50 project, and just like our city, they're experiencing better-than-expected traffic patterns. Certainly, we were prepared for the worst, and after the first few weeks, they are beginning to downgrade some of their services, that they, the extra services they put out to save the districts some money that they had planned, so that's, that's good news, but we did ask them to keep a diligent eye on any changes that occur, because there may be with the changing of the phasing, so they, they have done that. They promised to do that, as well as make sure, I asked them to make sure they, any reduction in bus service that people have become accustomed to, they will put signage out to folks to make sure they know the changes, if those changes are coming, especially around Rayleigh Field, so we can expect to see that, I think, at the end of this week. They also discussed, there was also this agenda item on the impacts of, of the construction project that are, be around the Sacramento's Entertainment and Sports Complex in downtown. Specifically, there, there's going to be obviously changes in bus routing during construction, and a possible loss of some bus routes, so there were some, a view of where the routes would go, where the new stops would be. So we're continuing to work with partners across the river and regional transit, and with the city of Sacramento to hopefully try to get an occasional, excuse, an additional stop in the downtown area. We think that's probably the most critical, so hopefully we can get some accommodation there, but in one route, there's a loss, proposed route, there's a loss of five stops and reducing it to one, and so we need to try to get at least one of those back to handle the 1,600 or so users that come at the peak periods. So again, this is an area I want to make sure you're aware of, is, there's just some, a little bit of noise around that, but I think we can handle it, and I know city staff is getting engaged in that as well. Finally, there was one item that I'm going to actually bring to the attention of the council, and it has to do with an agenda item that was suggested at one of our directors from the county, and that was around the idea of developing a county-wide transportation capital improvement plan, county-wide. It was an agenda item that was asked to be brought forward by the county to YCTD as possibly a county-wide endeavor, which would be to basically put in, into, all in, in one plan, all the county's needs, transportation needs, improvements, and then to have a prioritization process of those projects, and so we had an entity within Yolo County that could help, that could help go look for funding through grants and other way, other, otherwise through the, through that entity. And it, at this early stage, I think it's been proposed that YCTD act as that body, but it's still early yet, and I think that was clear, that, that the idea is just being floated. It is going to be at the county, the county managers' meeting this weekend, I'm sorry, on Friday, and it will be a topic there, and so we've asked for a report back from the county managers to vet this more. I think it's a little, a little early, but I would ask our city manager to report back, either through a summary back to the council, what the result of that meeting was, so we can start to get our head around kind of what the idea around this. And I should point out, part of what that agenda item also looked at was YCTD staff taking part and being possibly the lead agency in any endeavor around rail relocation, because there needs to be sort of one formal body to kind of take on any, as we're getting closer to maybe looking for funding on that or taking action, there has to be one body to sort of kind of take those early steps. That seemed like a reasonable ask, but again, we don't know how far along that is. But again, those are kind of two pertinent issues that I think would affect our council we're going to have to weigh in at some point, but I thought I'd bring those to your attention. So that, that was out of Monday's meeting at the, a very spirited YCTD board meeting. Also, last week, from, it was last week, yes, from, on the, early part of May, Saturday through last Wednesday, attended the Cap to Cap meeting, which is the regional meeting back to Washington DC to talk to delegates, our delegation, our congressional delegation about issues important to us. I want to take the opportunity to thank our city staff, notably Mike Lukin and others who really organized our, our message and carried our message to that committee. I sat on the Transportation Committee, and, which had a very, very big agenda, and I just wanted to kind of show, this was the folder that went out on Cap to Cap, and you'll notice two important projects for us that are on the cover, which are around the streetcar, which was the lead, one of the lead subjects for that committee to go around and talk about the importance of that to our region, as well as the bridges, and the I Street Bridge replacement project is first and foremost among them. So it was, again, this is an opportunity where some, I think there were some 300 or members of the delegation that went back to Washington DC and lobbied on the behalf of the region, and the fact that our projects were, were front and center, and that, those aren't the only ones that were highlighted. There's also additional projects, which we have three or four of them in there, that are important to us, really bodes well for how we're doing as a region, and, and the support we get for, for what we're doing. So I just want to thank staff for their great work, and Marty Tuttle was back there, the city manager was back there as well. So I think we had a very successful trip, talking to our congressional delegation, talking to other stakeholders involved in that. There was another meeting I participated in while there, which is one of the values of the, of the trip, which was a meeting organized by a few folks regarding the water issue, and it was organized by Robert Dugan, who's on the Plastra County Water Agency, Angelique Ashby, who's the mayor pro tem across the river, and Susan Rohan from the city of Roseville, who organized sort of an impromptu policy briefing on water and on the water bond and the BDCP, just an opportunity to, to learn more about level set on the issues that face us in Northern California. It was an opportunity to learn about the, the various actions taking place. I thought it was a very, again, another spirited discussion, open discussion, but there will be, I think, some acrosims, and Mr. Mayor, you may be hearing from them as a result of this, because they wanted to get a regular water forum going forward, so it may be something that you need to attend or have somebody from the council attend. But again, those are two items I wanted to make sure we, we talked about from Cap to Cap. That's all I have for today.
All right, I, let me pick up on the Cap to Cap piece, because council member Sandine and I were also, you may have said this, but we were both there as well.
Thank you.
And I was, participated on the flood team and, and a bit on the transportation team as well, so we met with Senator, with the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee staffer who handles flood, water, the port, all those issues. He and Senator French have obviously been good friends of the city on all of those issues, so it was largely a check-in session to make sure we're still good, not so much on WRTA, but he, because he handles the appropriations side. I'm trying to signal, we're, we're getting ready, once we get authorization, we'll be ready on our flood project, but we also need to deal with this small matter of, of the ports' maintenance dredging. It's a tiny issue, you know, nationally, but it's a big issue for us, and so they're, they're going to be following up in terms of making sure that that money gets in play. And a meeting with Congresswoman Matsui around our transportation projects, which you, you covered that one as well, the Yolo Rail Project being a significant one of those, and again, port dredging was a message taken all over the place. We did, during the trip, I didn't participate, but we had, we sent a delegation to the Federal Transit Administration to make a pitch for our proposal to have the streetcar enter federal project development, to essentially have the project become a federal project, and so that they would work with us towards what's called a full funding grant agreement, and by full funding, that means the full federal share of the funding, but that's, up to $75 million, it's the, it's the linchpin of the project. We'd filed that application, we'd filed the application, we hadn't heard back, we pushed them on it on Monday morning at 11:30, and at 3 o'clock on Monday, they issued the, they issued a letter approving our, our request to move into project development. There's no funding that comes with that, with that action, but it's very, it's, you can't get to funding, you can't get to the funding work without having that approval, and it's significant because it means that expenses that are incurred by us locally along the way from this point forward count as part of the federal, the match requirement for that, for that federal full funding. It's also important that we, we wanted to move as quickly as we could in the Streetcar Policy Committee and in our two councils, because there's money that's been appropriated for the, for the Small Starts Program, and there aren't that many, at the moment, there aren't that many viable, really strong viable projects, and FTA had been signaling to us that we probably are one. So for, I know for, you know, those of us on the Streetcar Committee, having the federal government say, hey, we've looked at your complicated project with two cities and two transit agencies and SECOG, and, you know, with funding that's mostly secured but some of it's not, we've looked at it and said, this is a real thing, this is the real deal. So for me, in addition to the project development itself, just having the vote of confidence from, from the independent federal reviewers was a big step, but that was, that was a very important milestone, so, to come out of the Cap to Cap trip. I also organized a trip to the White House for the, for the White House Executive Office Building for the elected official members of the delegation, and both council member Sandine and Ledesma attended, along with mayors, council members, and supervisors from throughout the rest of the region. We met with the National Economic Council, with the Council on Environmental Quality, and with the President's civic engagement and public liaison office on a variety of issues, flood protection, workforce development, and others. It was a great meeting, but it was also, I mean, I did think it was good that, the fact that we organized it and that several of the participants came, kept making, the folks from the White House kept making references to West Sacramento as though, as though I have an office there, was good for the other folks in the region to see that, that, you know, West Ac, is a, has some, some gravitas in the, in the Capitol and in the federal structure. So it was a very positive session in that sense. I think the other, the other elected officials in the region got a lot out of it as well, but it was a good, it was a positive visit. So I thought it was one of the more, more productive caps overall. Yesterday, I testified before the California State Senate's Transportation and Housing Committee, they were holding a subject matter hearing on, a status report on the implementation of SB 375, which is the landmark Sustainable Communities Law that was based on, or inspired by the Sacramento Region Blueprint, but it since, essentially links blueprint planning, scales it statewide to regions all over the state, and then directly ties it to AB 32 and the climate, the climate, climate emission reduction plan. And so I was invited to testify on behalf of what, what happened in Sacramento and how we're implementing it. It was a good hearing, I mean, I, it was all over the map, I would say the principal theme that I was articulating was that it has been successful, it, that if the legislature were to try, were to go in and start making significant changes to it, they should be careful, that it has worked in part because it has been flexible enough for folks to be innovative and excellent, as opposed to having everybody have to comply with a very exact, precise thing, which is what a lot of the, a lot of the advocacy groups would like to see just the law just require, okay? And from now on, on a parcel of this, everybody's going to have 12 units per acre or more, and everybody's going to have this share of biking and this share of cars and whatever. And, and most of those advocacy groups comes out, come out of LA and the Bay Area, and they have no clue what this, what, what does actual Sustainable Community Plan look like in Barstow, or in Firebaugh, or, there's not, what smart growth looks like in Roanoke Park, or, you know, in other parts of the coastal California is, it's untested really in a lot of the poorest rural parts of California, so be careful about that. And what we've been able to achieve in our region has been blend of voluntary cooperation, peer pressure, and some tools, but if the legislature should be very careful about starting to mandate all the outcomes that it wants to see, especially since it's, it has not done its share by eliminating redevelopment, which was the main, we were supposed to pay for this. So they ought to do no harm, let it work, and, and rely on the governor's principle of subsidiarity to let us get the job done. So I thought it was a good hearing, but it was a simple review process, and I think partly to test their own appetite as to whether they want to go in and start to change SB 375 in significant ways, which I hope they don't. All right, I think we got the report. I think it was in our newsletter, the Department of Finance released its new population estimates. We're now over 50,000?
Mm-hmm.
We are now over, I, I know this because we, we just submitted our preschool video, and it said we had 48,000 people in West Ac. Department of Finance has determined as of January of this year, we have 50,865 people resident within West Sacramento. So, yeah, so we don't need to tell, all the group, all the organizations that were members of APA and others, we don't need to tell them, because it usually changes our dues, but it's, 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 it's not a trivial milestone. And it shows, and that, we actually crossed the 50,000 threshold last year, so it's a, it shows sustained growth in the, in the latter part of the recession, which I, I was, I don't think has been immediately obvious to folks.
Mr. Mayor, does that factor in the CDVG, the block development grant money and the recategorization, or is that?
I don't think it's automatic. I think you have to, you have to apply for entitlement status, or, and I, and CDVG's not, they're not, they're not waiting for the State Department of Finance's monthly, I'm sorry, their periodic population estimates, so I don't, I don't, I don't know. But we've had some, I mean, 10 years ago, we were really pushing on this issue, you know, we have to get to 50 so we can get entitlement status, and that basically means we would have the flex, we would get an allocation of money and we could spend it within the range of what was eligible on what we determined to be the highest priorities. And, you know, kind of the example we knew before was, you know, it might be that this year, the staff at the state really like windshield surveys of mobile home parks, so we end up applying for a windshield survey for mobile home parks, when what we really need is to fix the water supply at the mobile home park, but we can't, but that's not competitive, so we don't apply for that, so we end up applying for stuff that we don't really need. And so entitlement status would be great, because then we could match our priorities with that. We've been so successful at winning those CDVG competitions, and I know our staff has said, you know, let's think about it when we get to 50,000, whether we really want to be an entitlement city, because we've been getting much more money than we would have gotten, not as, if we were entitlement. Yes, we've had to earmark it in slightly different ways, but we've been very successful at winning, so maybe we should stay in the, in the competitive round, but I think that that'll be an issue, staff will have to analyze and bring back to us at a future time. All right, then with that, we're, item 1C, we're going to defer that to the next meeting, and we'll go to item 2, which is presentation by the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District on mosquitoes and district services. And tonight, we have Gary Goodman joining us from the district, and he's, I don't know if he's going to introduce him, but he's accompanied by our city's longtime trustee on the, on the Mosquito Vector Control District Board of Directors, Mr. Rul De Anda. Welcome, welcome, Mr. Goodman.
Yeah, thank you very much. Really appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to come in. First of all, to formally introduce myself as the new manager of the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District. As the council knows, Mr. David Brown retired at the end of last year. Council put together a wonderful resolution congratulating him on his 30-plus years of service to, dedicated service to protecting public health. So the manager just got taller and has red hair now, so everything else should, should go through. The other thing I do want to try to bring up and talk about in terms of, of what's happening with mosquito control, and what's happening with West Nile virus coming up, and what we anticipate happening for the rest of this year and in the future, so. All right, there we go. So our district covers both Sacramento and Yolo County. We have an office down in Elk Grove, we also have an office in Woodland, and we protect about 2 million citizens within the, the two, the two counties together from mosquito-borne diseases such as West Nile virus, which we've had here for almost the past 10 years. And we're in a unique situation associated with being a bi-county district, and the fact that Yolo County is mostly agriculture, a lot of rice fields, a lot of agriculture, a lot of, we have the Yolo Bypass here, and then just on the other side of the river, we have a large population center of Sacramento. And of course, West Sacramento butts right up against that, so we produce a lot of mosquitoes in some of our agricultural areas, and unfortunately, mosquitoes don't necessarily recognize borders, and they tend to fly, so we have an impact on the population centers going forward. So, so I want to talk briefly just about, in general, mosquito lifecycle. Female mosquitoes are the only ones that bite, they take a blood meal to produce the, to get the protein to produce eggs, they then lay those eggs in water, typically standing water, anywhere from 150 to 200 eggs at a time, then they go through the whole metamorphosis in terms of larvae, pupae, and then adults. And so our target is to try to combat the mosquitoes in their aquatic stage before they emerge as adults, because once you have those 150 to 200 eggs that then emerge into adults, then you have, you exacerbate the problem, and so we try to focus our attention on the larval component of, of the mosquito control. And so some pictures in general of what the egg rafts look like, the larvae and its various stages, the pupa, and then of course, the adult mosquitoes. And so as I mentioned, you know, a big concern for us is some of the ag areas that we have, in the area, we have quite a bit of rice fields, which is about 50,000 acres of standing water with vegetation, perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes, the Yolo Bypass, a lot of wetlands, and a lot of irrigated pasture. Those are very easy spots for us to identify in terms of where mosquitoes may be breeding, and so we, it's very simple for us to try to find these, but we do a lot of effort in some of these agricultural areas. Again, right here, the Yolo Bypass, kind of the crown jewel of the BDCP, and impacts of wetlands and those types of components, very simple for us to see. However, one of the concerns that we always have moving forward are some of the urban sources, and as the downturn in the economy a few years ago, we saw a number of foreclosures, a number of bad swimming pools that were producing mosquitoes and having an impact on the general neighborhood. And so one of our messages is always to try to have folks go out through their yard once a week to look for potential standing water, whether it be the dog dish that's holding water, the sprinklers have, have turned on and maybe filled up buckets or tires that may be in the backyard. These are perfect breeding grounds for mosquitoes and very difficult for us to see, because we can't see through the fences or into people's backyards, and so we really rely on the public to make sure that they can give us a call and let us know when they may be seeing mosquitoes, so that we can go out and probably take a look at some of these areas and fix them for them. So for us, really, it's a matter of managing water. We work extensively with land managers, those wetland managers, landowners to manage those water, to make sure that they're not producing standing water that is producing mosquitoes. The same thing goes for folks in their own backyards, making sure that you're not overwatering things, that you're dumping out those water, water containers that could produce mosquitoes. Mosquitoes can produce, can, can breed actually in just a bottle cap of water, so they Mosquitoes can produce, can, can breed actually in just a bottle cap of water, so they don't really need that much. So we really rely on the public to be able to go out and take a look at those things. So we want people to try to get the message across. Check their yard once a week. Go around, maybe when you're picking up after your pet, go around and look for those areas that might produce standing water. Our program is focused on what we call integrated mosquito management measures. And so the first one is education and advertising. We have an active advertising program. We work with the media on trying to get our message out to the public and, and then also doing education things. We have a school program where we go out and give presentations to schoolchildren. We go to a lot of fairs and festivals, trying to educate the general public as to what they can do to prevent mosquito breeding and, and prevent being bitten and contracting diseases such as West Nile virus. We have a very active surveillance program, and our surveillance program is setting traps throughout the district to try to get an idea as to what the abundance of mosquitoes are in that particular area, comparing it to years past, comparing it to history to see if we've seen an increase, and maybe we need to send our crews out there to be able to try to take care of that problem. Physical control. Again, we work with land managers to manage that water. We have equipment such as backhoes and dump trucks and work with them on implementing best management practices to be able to reduce any standing water that they may have on the property. Our biological control program, for the most part, is mosquito fish. We provide mosquito fish free of charge. You just need to call us and give us a call. Let us come out to assess the situation to see if mosquito fish will be effective in that particular area. We plant a lot of mosquito fish in backyard swimming pools, obviously in some of the wetlands and rice fields and those types of areas, but they can be used in, in people's ponds and/or swimming pools if they're, if they're green pools. We have probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant almost 4,000 pounds of fish a year just in Sacramento and Yolo County, so we're very proud of that program. The next measure of our, of our mosquito control is the larvicide, which is, like, as I mentioned, we try to target the mosquitoes in their larval stage. So we go out and, and assess where mosquitoes may be breeding and then treat accordingly with appropriate products. And then, of course, the last stage for us is when we have infected mosquitoes and/or high abundance of adult mosquitoes, is when we have adult mosquito control measures. And we do that pretty regularly out in the agricultural areas with airplanes, but when we do have infection rates from the mosquitoes, we will potentially put an airplane up over, over town. And that's something that we've done off and on over the past 10 years. So West Nile virus activity in California, one thing that we want to try to make sure people have a recognition of is that, number one, West Nile is not going to go away. It's going to be here for a very long time. A lot of folks, when it first came in, first was detected in New York in 1999, and then within five years steadily made its way across the country to where we saw it in 2004 here in California. So we have the right mix of birds and mosquitoes to continue the West Nile virus cycle for us. West Nile virus is a bird disease, so it's carried by birds. It's just transmitted through the bite of an infected mosquito. So mosquito bites an infected bird, picks it up, and then when it bites another bird and/or human, it can pass on the virus there. So in 2005, we, California was the epicenter, and specifically Sacramento, Sacramento area was the epicenter for the most human cases in the state and the country. We had 179 human cases in 2005. Since then, California started to fall off, but in the last couple of years, we've actually seen a bit of a resurgence in terms of West Nile virus cases. One issue associated with this is actually, we believe West Nile virus is underreported. The symptoms typically of, of West Nile virus are flu-like symptoms that can last anywhere from just a couple days to actually weeks on end. But if you get a flu in the middle of summer after being potentially bitten by a mosquito and you start to recover, you may not actually go to the doctor and report that you've been bitten and, and be tested for West Nile virus. And so we actually think these numbers are well underreported. We're starting to see, actually, the majority of these cases are starting to become the more serious neuroinvasive form of West Nile virus, which can lead to paralysis and/or death. And so we've had a number of cases, unfortunately, over the years where people have succumbed to West Nile virus as a whole. So, so our concern again is, is it going to be a bad year? It really depends on the climate and the temperature that we're going to have. This year, we're experiencing a drought, which on face value might seem good for mosquitoes. If we have less water, we'll have less mosquitoes. However, literature shows that in a drought type of situation, what happens is now you have a greater integration between the birds and the mosquitoes wherever there is water. So we tend sometimes to actually see a higher intensity of virus, although it may be more local, localized and focused. And so what we're hoping is that we may see a lower abundance of mosquitoes during this upcoming year, but that potentially we may actually see a bit of an increase in West Nile virus activity because of that interaction with the drought. One concern we also have with drought situations that, that are occurring is a lot of people are starting to, or want to save water or conserve water, and so they're using gray water. Maybe they're, when they're cooking dinner, or maybe they're brushing their teeth, they're saving that water, and then they're going to water their plants with it outside. And so what we're finding at some homes is that people are collecting that water in buckets, and then they're putting it in the backyard, and they're not putting a cover over it or screen over it to keep the mosquitoes out. And so they're actually, while they're being very water-conscious, they're not being very mosquito-conscious. And so that's a concern. We want to try to make sure that the public recognizes that, that what, if they are going to try to conserve water in that fashion, please put a cover over it or a screen, a fine mesh screen, to make sure that the mosquitoes can't get into it. One other issue I want to try to, to bring up is we are starting to see some invasive species of mosquitoes enter into California. We have two different types. The Asian tiger mosquito, 80s Alloptictus, has been found in Southern California. It was first detected in 2001 in the lucky bamboo that, that folks were buying at the stores. Typically, they were being flown in, but once the demand became so great, they started to ship them in on containers. And when they shipped them in, that's a much longer trip than, than a plane ride, so they started filling them up with water. And when you're bringing them from areas that have this particular species of mosquitoes, the mosquitoes were tagging along with it. And so they were finding it down in Southern California. And this is a concern because this is a very efficient vector of dengue virus, and so can transmit dengue. And so we're starting to see this in Southern California, and our district is putting together surveillance tactics to make sure that we don't discover this up here. But this is a concern because we have about a dozen or so imported cases of dengue, of people that are traveling to other areas. You can be in an area where dengue is endemic in, in just a few short, short plane ride, and then you can bring it back here. If you start to then experience the symptoms and we have the efficient vector for it, then we can have local transmission, and we want to try to make sure that we're avoiding that aspect. The other invasive species that we're seeing is 80s Egypti. It's called the yellow fever mosquito. This mosquito has been found in Madera, Fresno area, and also San Mateo. And this one is also a vector of dengue and chikungunya. And chikungunya is a new disease that's being found currently right now in the Caribbean. There's been quite a few local transmission cases of chikungunya in the Caribbean, which is essentially right on our doorstep. So similar to how West Nile virus came here, it, it got established in the United States and then quickly made its way across the country. This is another mosquito that if it gets established, we could have local transmission of, of chikungunya, which obviously we want to avoid. So one of the biggest messages that we have, we have what we call seven Ds of prevention. The first one is drain any standing water. Go around your backyard, make sure that you're not producing mosquitoes in your own yard. Drain any, any water that may be there. Dawn and dusk are times when mosquitoes are most active, so please try to avoid being outdoors, because if you don't get bitten by a mosquito, I can guarantee you won't get West Nile. If you do have to be outside, dress in long sleeves or long pants. I know that's very difficult in the Sacramento area when we have 100-degree temperatures like we have today, to always be wearing long sleeves. But if you can't do that, then put on a good repellent. Defend yourself with a good repellent. DEET is still the gold standard, but there are some other products that are out there. They just don't last as long, so make sure that folks are reading the label. Doors and screens. So again, in the evening time, sometimes we get the delta breeze. We want to open up the, the house and, and get that breeze comes through. Just make sure that your doors and screens are mosquito-proof, that the screens are in good condition and, and are not allowing mosquitoes to enter in. And then, of course, the last one is, call the district. This is what we're here for. So we want to know if you're seeing a problem, if you're having an issue with mosquitoes in your yard, if you know of a, a green swimming pool or something in your neighborhood, give us a call. We come out, we take care of it, and we move forward. So those essentially are the, the seven Ds that we have. We have more information on our website at fightthebite.net, and/or you can give us a call. So again, I appreciate the time and effort to, to have me come out and talk to you and introduce myself as, as the new district manager. Does the council have any questions?
Mayor brought in Joe Hannison.
Yeah, just a quick one. It just, the thought occurred to me, the 150 legs that the mosquitoes lay. Is there a relationship to female and male? Is females are the only biters?
Females are the only biters, but when they lay the eggs, you're going to have a mix of both male and female that are going to emerge. And so the issue that, that obviously comes out is we want to try to target them in the larval stage, that we're not having that emergence of now adult mosquitoes that are now going to go look out for new blood meals and then lay more eggs and, and just exacerbate the problem. But, but yeah, it's, it's a mix of, there's, it's not 50/50 exactly. It's, uh, just like with anything else, sometimes you get more, more females than males and sometimes the opposite.
Okay. Mr. Ledesma?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. And I'll say thank you and welcomes. Nice to meet you. Appreciate you coming out.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great.
So I, can you help, I don't understand, the, the, I'm missing this one part of the science or the math, but that's because I'm an econ major. So if, if there's, if, if we leave lots of water out, then we'll get more mosquitoes? If, as a result of the drought and, but presumably any efforts that would reduce the number of, of water, then we'll get, we'll get more, more virus cases?
Well, yeah.
I was struggling. What do you, what do you want us to do?
Absolutely. No, no, in a drought situation, you're going to have less standing water essentially. And so wherever that standing water is going to be, you're now going to have an integration of birds and mosquitoes. Mosquitoes are going to want to lay their eggs in that water because that's the only water that they can find, and then the birds are obviously there to come to drink. So you have that greater interaction. When there's actually somewhat more water, then things are spread out a little bit. So yeah, it doesn't really make, you know, on face value, so we may see less abundance of mosquitoes, but if we have more interaction between those birds and mosquitoes, then conceivably the virus can, can amplify in those particular areas. The, the good part for us is that hopefully we'll know where those water spots are, and so we can contain wherever that virus activity may be into a very local focal place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to our consent agenda, which is items 3 through 11. We're going to take item 9, it's on consent, but we're going to consider it separately. So are there other items on consent to, to remove, or any item for a separate question or comment? All right. Then, then, and the council has some amendments to item 7, which are ministerial in nature of the desk. So is there a motion on the consent agenda minus item 9 with amendments to, to item 7?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Proteme Joe Hannison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, or any none. Well, she carries him and turns to Mayor, to Mayor Proteme Ledesma. I'm sorry, Mayor Proteme Joe Hannison, why'd you turn your mic on? No, no, he was, he turned his on, like I was supposed to call on him. So it's going to turn to Mayor Proteme Joe Hannison for the remainder of the consent agenda. No, I did. I haven't got, no, no, no.
Okay. Good, good. All right. So this item is consideration of lease and sublease agreements between the city and Smart Growth Investors LLC for Riverwalk Park and event venue property in consideration of resolution 14-34, delegating authority to the city manager to negotiate and execute agreements. Ms. Hamilton.
Katie, I think.
Katie?
Were there questions on this item, or did you want me to do a presentation?
Why, why don't you just present the, the item?
Tonight, staff is recommending that the council find the Bridge District specific plan environmental, EIR, is the appropriate level of environmental review for the project, and that none of the conditions requiring additional environmental review in the SEQA guidelines 15162 exist. Staff is recommending council approval of resolution 1434, delegating authority to the city manager to complete negotiations, draft, and execute a lease and sublease agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors II for an event venue improvement substantially compliant with the terms that are attached to the resolution, attachment 1. And staff is recommending that council approve $2.6 million capital improvement appropriation in Fund 405 from unencumbered balances in Fund 405, which is the Bridge District 2014 As you are aware, the Riverwalk promenade is the heart of the specific plan vision and is a critical amenity and in terms of achieving the lively day and night destination envisioned for the district. It's essential for urban placemaking, for the streetcar, and in urban scale of development. The master plan for the Riverwalk envisions quasi-public amenities intended to transition public and private spaces like Universal Streets and distributed park elements. The Bridge District 2014 plan improvements installed the first phase of the Riverwalk with a well-lit 4,700-foot linear feet path, paved path with shade structures and benches, and paved east-west corridors connect the Riverwalk with the east-west streets. The Bridge District governing documents provide for extensive additional backbone improvements to the Riverwalk of $19.7 million and supplemental improvements to the Riverwalk of up to $38.9 million, and provide council discretion as to the timing and scope of those improvements. Smart Growth Investors developer has proposed a public-private transaction with a city investment of up to $2.6 million in, of Bridge District funds and a total project of $5.6 million, and that includes the value of the land. The land will have a 30-year lease for park uses on it or a 30-year, 30-year term park easement. The proposed project expands Garden Universal Street as it intersects with the Riverwalk. It expands, it adds about 0.6 of an acre of amenitized space anchored by an iconic structure intended to evoke the agricultural heritage of the city. Additional private property will be utilized for large events of several thousand attendees. Landscaping, paving, disabled parking, and circulation for delivery trucks and food trucks will be installed by the developer as part of the improvements. Tenant improvements to the structure include a kitchen, six-stall restroom facilities, and in the early years, an interpretive space that will provide interpretive information about the river and the Bridge District. Charity events, small concerts, races, farmers' markets, private parties are examples of the types of events that are projected to occur there and be hosted. The proposed transaction terms provide that a conditional use permit is required for operations, and the agreements provide that all operations and maintenance costs are to be the responsibility of the developer, and the developer assumes all liability, indemnifies the city, and assumes all responsibility. The agreements are for a 30-year term, but they do provide an option for the developer to stop the operations. If he exercises that option, however, he would be repaying the city for the unamortized value of its investment. And the agreement will provide other terms and requirements with regard to the operations of the Beer Garden number events, and that language is still being negotiated.
Great. Is that it? Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
All right. We do not have any requests for comments, so it's back to council for comments. Ms. Ledesma?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Proteme Joe Hannison. First of all, Katie, thanks for the good job on this. I know you've been working hard to sort of get, get this to this point, so I appreciate you in, in doing an impromptu presentation for us and recapping everything for us on this item. But, you know, this is, this is a great opportunity for us. I know the developer is anxious to get this going and wanting to get the operation going. And so I know there's still some work to do to kind of get it to a point where both the city and the developer are, are understanding of the program needs and what the city would like to make sure that this is operational, but I have every confidence they'll, they'll do so. You know, we, the, this is a, a great, I think, project that we can participate in because it's not only investment by the developers, it's an investment for us for all the prior investment we've made along the riverfront, from the infrastructure to the streets to the, everything we've done over the years, starting years ago. I'm sure Councilmember Kristoff knows the many years we've been working on the Bridge District and that riverfront to activate it. So this is sort of one more step to make sure we not only activate it for our community members, have someplace a destination they can go, but certainly it's an opportunity members, have someplace a destination they can go, but certainly it's an opportunity to attract new investment, to help build out the rest of the Bridge District. So I'm looking forward to this moving forward. So thank you.
Mr. Christoff?
I'm fine.
All right. Just one question, Katie. On the operation and use of the premises on the facility sublease, basically we've got a requirement the party is going to meet regularly, not less than quarterly, to jointly plan the activities of this venue. Will those reports of those quarterly meetings be coming back to council?
Yeah, we can include them in your council newsletters or by separate memo.
Yeah, just to get a heads up.
Definitely.
What's coming out? Great. Any further comments or a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved in a segment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We're going to proceed then to item 12, which is public hearing to consider objections to the proposed removal of weeds. Assuming the fire uniform was the signal. You know, I was kind of chuckling to myself. The public board director was not moving at all. I saw the eyes on me. On April 30th of this year, a city council passed resolution 1413, which began the 2014 weed abatement process. Thank you. Notices were then sent to property owners that have or have had weed abatement issues in the past. It is respectfully recommended that city council open this public hearing to receive complaints or objections in regards to those notices and to instruct staff to proceed with the process. And I'm here for any questions or comments. Are there any questions at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Then we're going to open the public hearing. We have no written requests, so because this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for any further questions or discussion.
I'll move the item.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Christoff and seconded by Mayor Protem Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13 is continued public hearing to discuss projects eligible for the city of West Sacramento Housing Trust Fund Program in consideration of resolution 14-12 authorizing submission of a 2014 Local Housing Trust Fund grant application to the state of California. Let's call this.
We're here this evening to ask the council to conduct a public hearing to review projects that may be eligible for local housing trust fund assistance. And if the council so chooses to conduct the public hearing, then we also ask that the council authorize submission of a 2014 grant application to the state Local Housing Trust Fund Program. Local Housing Trust Fund Program provides matching funds, so it's a one-to-one match. So the city is eligible to apply for up to $1 million, which would match $1 million of local funds currently that are in the city's housing trust fund. This is an opportunity for the city to leverage our scarce local funds with state money, particularly important with the loss of housing set aside, to accomplish our affordable housing goals. Does the council have any questions on the -- there's three activities that are under consideration. One is Delta Lane Phase One, Delta Lane Phase Two, and the Landmark Lofts Affordable Housing Project. So does the council have any questions on the staff report or the proposed potential activities?
Seeing -- we see none?
Okay.
All right.
That concludes my presentation.
All right. So we have before's resolution 14-12 then. First, let's open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ledesma?
No comment.
No, but I do have a question. Louise, how many affordable housing projects do we have spread throughout the city of West Sacramento?
I don't know the number of projects. I know that we have approximately 1,500 units.
Well, if you -- if one goes and just starts to put some projects together, I know there's two over off of Eighth Street or Seventh Street in Broderick, 815 Bright Avenue, a couple out in Southport, Holly Court. I mean, it seems like there are a lot more units than the 1,500 if you start to go through the progression of where and the address of these apartment complexes. We've got them on West Capitol Avenue, Capitol Courtyards, you know, there's a number of them. And so I guess for future, one of the things I'd like to know is I'd like to know where these affordable projects are and actually how many units we do have. I mean, if we've got a population of 50,000 people, what seems to be a decent ratio for the number of affordable units? Because we still have some to build in the Bridge District. And I'm sure we'll have them to build, you know, spread throughout the city because some of the requirements. But that would be some information that is very helpful to me. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Mayor Protem Johansson?
Well, Lisa, the homeless coordinator, would that -- that would be information, once we get that up and running, they would probably have at their fingertips, I would imagine.
I actually have it at my desk. I just don't remember the exact number on the top of my head. But, yeah, I mean, I could provide it tomorrow, but...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did you open the public hearing? Yeah, I've already closed the public hearing.
Okay. I'll move the recommended action.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Protem Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none? Motion carries. Item 14 is an update on the Washington Neighborhood Sustainable Communities Grant in consideration of the 2014 schedule of public meetings.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Staff's presenting an update on the HUD Sustainable Communities Grant for the Washington District and providing a schedule of upcoming council commission and public meetings. In 2011, the city was awarded a $400,000 grant with $350,000 of local match to develop strategies intended to shift development patterns toward compact transit served mixed youth growth in the Washington area of the city. Final grant deliverables are due in March of 2015, and they include a transit-oriented development strategy to identify and address solutions related to infrastructure deficiencies, transit needs, regulatory barriers, infill opportunities, neighborhood preservation, and zoning for densities to support streetcar. A complete community strategy also is due in March that will focus on affordable housing and park and recreational amenities. The Washington Neighborhood is ripe with potential for sustainable mixed-use real estate development and investment. It has a walkable urban-scale grid with a beautiful tree canopy and historic structures. It has a riverfront location with a fully improved Riverwalk, new high-rise office development with additional towers and housing being planned and under construction, and it's identified as a priority area for development in the SA-COG blueprint. It is poised as an opportunity area to meet the rising demand for residential living in the downtown area. Remaining undeveloped parcels in Sacramento are very limited in the downtown area, and they're appraising it upwards of $60 a square foot. So the Washington District and the Bridge District are the best opportunity sites for addressing market demands for new downtown living. However, the Washington area has challenges. Challenges include vacant and underutilized properties, some with absentee owners, infrastructure deficiencies, more rental-than-owner occupied property, transient homeless populations. Strategies to address the challenges of realizing transit-served development must focus on the relationship between the quality of life and development patterns in the Washington Neighborhood. The project team includes key members from Parks, Planning, Public Works, and Community Development, and also includes Bright and Broderick Community Action Network, the West Sacramento Historical Society, and P. Genie has recently agreed to participate with the city on the project as the project team is exploring eco-districts and energy infrastructure. Consultants on the team are Fair and Peers, Schmidt Design Group, URS. Some highlights on our efforts. We have completed our development scenarios for the district, which protect the historic single-family residential areas while projecting an increase in densities on underutilized parcels, especially along the planned streetcar route. We are initiating modeling of water, sewer, and storm drainage and using cameras to assess the condition of the conveyance systems. This will determine where infrastructure needs to be upsized and rehabilitated. Zoning changes will be implemented with the general plan update and sequin analysis, which are currently underway. Transportation and circulation is a huge focus of our efforts. We've completed a transportation baseline analysis. We've identified deficiencies in connectivity for bike, pet, and vehicle, and we've conceptually identified a series of new cross-sections to address the physical improvements needed to reach established connectivity, transit, and walkability goals for all modes of transportation. We're going to be doing some very focused master planning for circulation in a couple of areas in the district where there's already extensive analysis. Um, we have a complete extensive analysis in the Grand Gateway and West Capitol connection studies, and we will be bringing this to a public meeting and a planning commission meeting tomorrow night, and that will be followed by council workshops. We have another area focused analysis of circulation improvements, which is around the I Street Bridge replacement. We'll be analyzing the impact of the bridge replacement and realignment, assessing the existing roadways and levee setbacks in terms of the developability and circulation and how the levee impacts the developability of some of those riverfront parcels, and making sure that there's adequate circulation, planning done to address the conditions after the bridge is reconstructed. Finally, we're doing design engineering level of the streetcar route, looking at underpass heights and turning movements, and analyzing the additional development standards and frontage types to support compatibility along the streetcar route and support the streetcar. BBKN and the Historical Society have completed surveys of structures in the neighborhood, and we will be considering historical preservation policies and branding in the next phase. We've completed our infill development site opportunities analysis and have gotten significant input from the community stakeholders that addressing the vacant and underutilized properties is key to creating a sense of safety for the neighborhood. We're just beginning with the parks and recreation needs analysis. By far, the prevalent community feedback in this area, and that was the most common comments received during the first public participation session, is that there is a strong desire for more neighborhood-serving park amenities. May 19th kicks off further public engagement on parks amenities. An urban strategy for delivering parks and open space is being developed, and Schmidt Design Group has completed its assessment and is starting public outreach. We are also completing our analysis for the affordable housing element. The goal of the project team is to complete the strategies before December. After the grant is closed, the team anticipates it will take another year of actions to implement these strategies into the specific plan and other city regulatory documents. It's respectfully recommended that the city council receive this grant progress report and propose 2014 schedule of meetings.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Are there questions for staff? Or any discussion?
I would just say this is an ambitious program. It's an important one. And I know we're partly guided by -- we're substantially guided by what the requirements of the federal grant are. But when we applied and we decided to vote, you know, almost half of the total expenditure is coming from our local resources, really was a very specific results-oriented intention that we were trying to make this area more -- the change that we've already envisioned and that the neighbors have already envisioned through the prior process that we went through with BBKN and our last general plan and before that, the Washington specific plan, to make things happen. Right? So what are the -- if what was missing was this specific tool or this specific piece of infrastructure, what are the levers of change? And recognizing that the federal requirements are that we do all of this outreach, that -- just a reminder, and it's clear from the schedule, you get it too, but just a reminder, for the city, our objective was never an outreach program. Right? We're not -- our intention was not, "Let's go out and ask people yet again, in a dream world, what would you like to have?" Right? For a lot of reasons. One is, you know, when there's this many gaps, it's hard to set those priorities. But we also, you know, we have -- we've got to put it in the context of an overall plan. I now live in a neighborhood with some of the greatest children's play structures because the Parks Commission and the neighborhoods. We want play structure for kids. There are not kids in the neighborhood. But that's what you get when people think they're supposed to say, "Oh, it's a park so it should better have play structures." We have to put our lens back on it about how do we actually make this happen? And this has been our opportunity to do a small amount of that. I mean, $750,000 and $400,000, which is a grant, is a tiny, tiny amount of money for what we're trying to do. But at the end of it, we really, we want this to leverage real change and not simply buttress our agenda of the things that we would have liked to, you know. Then we'll have an implementation strategy after that. This was supposed to be the implementation strategy. So we can't just do that because the federal government requires that we do this for the rest of this process as well, and it's not a bad thing. But just as we set our marker of, you know, for ourselves, how are we doing on this project? For me, it's really how much of those tools are we delivering? How much of the change are we actually leveraging? How much more developable have we made these corner parcels? And how much more likely is the streetcar as a result? That's going to -- for me, that's the performance metric that's going to matter the most on what is an amenability. This looks like a much more than $700,000 project that you have going. And it's a critical one, but it's an important window and of opportunity that we can't afford to miss.
I agree. What's that? Any other discussion?
I have a question. Under one of the areas that are going to be studied are the affordable housing needs analysis. As I read through the paragraph and everything, I'm really trying to figure out what it means. Because it talks about multifamily units developed to be -- to redevelop in the next 10 years, and 39 multifamily units or more 10 years beyond that. And then it talks of something else about other work to be done in conjunction with economic development staff. And then it says, "Housing staff will prepare a strategy to meet future affordable housing needs."
If I can...
Go on.
...that out a bit. The grant right now, part of the grant products are build-out projections in anticipation of densities that will support streetcar ridership and where those parcels are located. And so part of our products are creating these projections and build-out models, and that's what we use then to model for sewer waters, storm drain, to make sure that we've got the infrastructure in place and that connectivity in place. And so in doing so, you look at where there's very underutilized parcels or there's a lot of vacant area... lot of vacant area, and so, part of the analysis is to project where there are blighted structures that may be taken down, or substandard housing, and then, just to project that need possibly for the future. And then where ultimately that affordable housing development occurs in the city is not known, so that's just part of the future planning.
So when it talks about by 2035, they are expecting a total number of units of 3,287. What district, will that be in the Washington District?
No, no, absolutely not. So, in the, the goal, part of the goal of smart growth and smart transit-oriented development is really about diversity and achieving diversity. So, we have a lot of renter-occupied housing in the district, and the goal, again, or the grant deliverable requirement is simply that you project if there's going to be additional affordable housing needs as a result of your project, but we're not locating where and when any additional affordable housing will be built.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Mr. President Joe Henderson, although, just to ask, so the staff report says by 20, we're expecting a total of 3287 dwelling units in the Washington Specific Plan area. I think that might be the cause of the...
Oh, so that's the build-out projection for residential, but that's not all afford, that's just total residential.
Okay, okay. Mayor President Joe Henderson, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, Katie, on the, one of the elements of this is going to be looking at the neighborhood preservation analysis, and there have been discussions over the years about some type of preservation ordinance, or some type of consideration of that in the neighborhood. So this is great that we're looking at this, but, so what we're looking at here is factors that would make this a sustainable community from a number of different aspects, but it really doesn't get into branding or placemaking. I mean, it does indirectly. I think the thing that more closely would touch on that would be the historic preservation, you know, to determine the historic significance of this area. Would this, actual, you know, branding of the area, it wouldn't be included in a site like this, would it? But it could provide the factual background to do that.
Yes, so, the Parks Consultant that we chose, although their budget is very limited, has a lot of experience in working with communities on branding, and so, part of what they're going to be doing on May 19th with the community is a little bit of a branding exercise, and I anticipate the historic character of the neighborhood will come up, and they'll probably allow for some dialogue about how the Historic Society, or B B C A N, or other, you know, groups in the community, or neighbors, want to see that carried forward. It may be in the form of improvements, it may be how you carry out streetlights or park amenities, or it could be something more formal of a regulatory nature, but we just haven't gotten into that phase yet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, this is actually kind of an example of what I said earlier. I want to be careful that we don't treat this like it's a, the nature of a historic, it will be the city's principal historic district as a destination, it'll be in the regional waterfront, it'll be right off the new bridge, on the streetcar line. It isn't a neighborhood project, right, so this, we shouldn't get in the mode that what we're doing is asking B B C A N or a neighborhood meeting to tell us what to do next. We have done that, and we've incorporated that in our citywide plans and visions, because this area, like all parts of the city, we're a single city, and so we really need to be focused on the implementation in some way, and with, you know, with feedback and input, but that's not really, that's not the purpose here, is not to go out and say, what do you think we should do about historic preservation? I mean, we have, if we think the historic dimension has the potential of being a lever and making this area develop sustainably in a smart growth framework, then we ought to be thinking, okay, what are the right tools to do that? And maybe it's a land use overlay, maybe it's regulatory, maybe it's none of that, maybe it's entirely, we're going to go put up markers and branding and flags and other things, but it's, okay, how, and what would be the first thing we would need to do, that we couldn't, that we have no other, you know, funding source for, that would spark that? That's, I hope that's what we're, you know, each one of these punch list items, that's how we're taking the approach, and we're using the outreach sessions really as just a checkpoint, to say, here's where we're headed, here's what we're doing, does that sound okay, does that sound like a good idea to you? As opposed to, like, opening up and give us, because we just don't have the time or the resources to be able to accomplish that. And we've already asked, and I think the, one of the fallacies of civic engagement is to continue to ask people to engage and give outreach input, and then not deliver, and then come back five years later and ask again, and not deliver, and come back and ask again. For that to be an authentic process, we need to take some time to focus just on implementing what we already, what we already learned from the last time. Mr. Lidesma.
Thank you. I think in that vein, it kind of brought me back to one of the issues you brought up, and I read, and I think I'm connecting the dots about where we want to go in terms of implementation. It has to do with the infrastructure, excuse me, needs analysis, and, you know, it kind of dawned on me that we haven't really, you know, what is underneath, and what can, what kind of capacity can it hold? And I recall, at my planning commission days, the Bridge District, having very robust conversations about the infrastructure that was going in as a result of the Prop 1 C funds, and the amount of density and units it could hold, and so I kind of, when I read this, I was suddenly reminded of that, because we really don't know in this area, right?
Right.
So, is an outcome of this study going to be, that, well, not just assessment of where potential spots are, but a potential cost that would be...
Absolutely, we'll be designing pipe sizes, volumes, we'll be able to do cost estimates. We can, we will, we plan on moving forward after our strategies are done into the next phase, which is to look at funding sources and prioritize. You know, we have circulation, that's very important, we have those two focused areas, but also, we have to look at the underground infrastructure and determine where that's a priority, and if we're going to be having to, you know, tear up streets in order to upsize pipes or rehab, then we want to also put in frontage improvements for walkability at the same time. So, we have, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and it is very similar to the Bridge District and sort of the methodical, you know, approach that we're taking.
And in that vein, I think what the part that I'm, that I promoted with and wanted to see in the Bridge District, which is actually happening, is once we assess that and, you know, and have that implementation plan, you know, I really don't want to see sort of a dictate of types of buildings, and I think we need to have, I think what I remember in 10 years ago, talking about the Bridge District, was there was so much it could hold, and I kind of used the analogy of a planter's garden. We knew, Charlene and David probably remember this, because they were sitting there, listening to me at the time, but, you know, you wanted, we knew it could handle so much density and so much types of projects, and we kind of gave a guideline, and the Washington Specific Plan articulates that even clearer, but, you know, I wanted a pathway where people can come in and know right away. First of all, we know we'll have to find, by way of funding, to get the infrastructure in place, and then do that, but I really want to kind of let the growth happen organically, so where folks can propose project by project. I think that's one of the things about this neighborhood that would be so cool, is that there are smaller lots. It's a challenge, because I think in the Bridge District, we had, what, 10 property owners, maybe? And here, we have multiple property owners that we're going to have to negotiate through and lead through in terms of how we're going to rip up streets and get to where we are, but then they all have the opportunity to do something on their property, but we've got to show them that pathway. So I'm excited about this, I'm also cautious about it, because I don't know what's underneath, and I think neither do we, so that'll be interesting to see, so.
Yeah, that, I think, is exactly, it's a perfect encapsulation of what this grant was for, which is, is because the Washington area is not essentially, you know, abandoned land ready to be reclaimed from scratch, and it's a million property owners, some of whom we don't even know how to track down. There's no way to do what we did in the Bridge District. There's no, you can't assemble people and say, okay, if you want this area to improve, that you own property in, then you're going to, you'll have to invest in the infrastructure and all that work. And we don't have any other way to pay for it. So we got this grant, and that's exactly what it's for. So, to me, every dollar going into this fund that is not required by federal action to go to, you know, something else, needs to be for that. And the underground is a perfect example, because it's the sort of thing, if you say, okay, what if somebody said, I've read your specific plan, and all the input from B B C A N, and what you want a restaurant, and a coffee house, and with some condos on top of it, and a preschool on the third floor? I want to build that. And you come to City Hall, and we say, well, we know that there's issues under the street that you would have to take care of, but we don't know what they are, and we know, we know the council talks about historic district all the time, but we don't, we haven't had a project before them, so we don't know what that's going to look like. You get all these unanswered questions, that if it was the Bridge District, we would have spent, you know, $2 million answering, but that's what this source of fund is to do, is to essentially act as though there is a, for us to act as though we're the master developer with those funds, and that means investing in real, hard stuff, just to, you know, to really beat this horse. We really need to, we really need to get that level of value out of it, so that the private and other investment actors can do their thing.
And to me, that's the opportunity. I mean, it's a huge challenge, but if we can pull this off, it's absolutely, it could be, it's an opportunity for us to do something that I don't know if anybody else has ever done, in this kind of neighborhood, so.
Right, and that's what Aaron promised when you wrote this thing. All right. Any other discussion on this? All right, thanks very much, Katie. All right, that brings us to item 15, which is workshop on the Pioneer Bluff Transition
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. This is the second Pioneer Bluff workshop. The first, at the initial workshop in November, council provided initial direction to staff, gave us preliminary direction to get us started on this project, so that we can complete Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan by the end of this year. So, staff's effort has really ramped up in the last three months. We've been in an active due diligence phase, and tonight's workshop is a check-in with the council to present our staff's recommended approach, to receive council comment and direction, particularly on these three important early items. That is, issues related to South River Road, the city's corporation yard, and tank farm relocation. So, just briefly, to recap the context, Pioneer Bluff is 130 acres, it's about a mile long, situated between the Bridge District to the north, Stone Lock to the south, and since construction of the Barge Canal in the 1950s, it's been surrounded on three sides by water and rail. That's about to change with the construction and opening of the McGowan Bridge at the south end. And there will be additional connectivity to the north in the Bridge District with the extension of Riverfront Street to 15th Street, and ultimately, if...
When?
A bright...
When did you, when, not if, right?
Oh, when, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Positive thinking.
Okay. That's a when, and then I'll classify this one as a when as well, and that's the Broadway Bridge. When the Broadway Bridge is built, then we have a direct connection to the Broadway corridor in the city of Sacramento. So this slide illustrates the intensity of the existing industrial uses in Pioneer Bluff. In fact, the only non-active parcels are the old Calply facility here, and the Semex facility here, which we were hopeful that that would actually be coming down as we speak tonight, but that project got delayed a little bit by the Fix 50 project. We showed this same area, we blew it up on a poster-sized board at the public workshop for the general plan a couple of weeks ago, and received public comment on Pioneer Bluff Transition, and the overwhelming comment, theme from the public that night was, how are you going to do that? How are you going to relocate all these businesses? So we have a plan, prioritized approach that focuses on three transition drivers, if you will. Again, to reiterate, those are South River Road, the city corp yard, which also includes the decommissioned wastewater treatment plant, and the tank farm properties, including Shell, Buckeye, and the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Facility, which supports the two tank farms. So, while we're on this slide, I just want to summarize a few things, and then we'll talk about each of these three areas in more detail. So, starting with South River Road, there are traffic safety issues that will need to be addressed before the opening of the McGowan Bridge, primarily related to right-of-way encroachments and the current practice of trucks queuing as they wait to load at the tank farms. And then there are decisions to be made regarding the configuration of South River Road, including width and alignment, and how it intersects with 15th Street. And so, just to point out, we have a right-of-way that varies in width from 60 to 80 feet. So in the northern portion here, between 15th Street and the freeway, it ranges from 60 to 70 feet. South of 15th Street to the curve, it's 80 feet, and from the curve south to the Barge Canal, it's 60 feet. And we have an alignment which somewhat mimics the bend in the river here, and we'll have to be conscious of how that relates to the levee prism, which has yet to be surveyed, which is one of our recommendations that we'll talk about tonight. But much as was done in the Bridge District, the levee will be, levee prism will be surveyed, and there'll be a development setback line from that prism, which may start to get pretty close to South River Road, particularly in this area here. So, the other two areas, the city corp yard and wastewater treatment plant, you can see, this is a large chunk of Pioneer Bluff here. This is a cornerstone site, a key development site. The city owns this property and has the ability to relocate itself. We'll talk about that. And finally, the tank farm parcels collectively represent a large chunk of Pioneer Bluff, and of course, are a critical component of the transition plan. Okay, so, getting into a little more detail here, can we dim the lights a little bit? Those pictures are, several pictures here which illustrate what I just summarized.
That much, please.
These four pictures are taken in the south area, near the city's corporation yard, and you can see...
Right here. We need preset three?
I can, I know these pictures, but the audience probably doesn't, okay. There we go. So these four pictures are from the south area, and you can see it's, and this is the area where it's 60 feet wide, the right-of-way. Strike for two lanes, there are no bike, ped facilities, we have these storm drain trenches on either side, we have a fence line here that is likely within the right-of-way. And I don't have an illustration for you, but there will be a traffic signal here. This is the Clark Pacific property, and as part of the bridge construction scope, there will be a traffic signal here, and there'll be a traffic signal at this location at Clark Trucking. And if you can see this photo, one of the issues we're concerned about is perpendicular parking. This is the Clark Pacific frontage here, there are 42 spaces, which are fully occupied every day, and on the other side... And on the other side of the street, this is the corporation yard, and that includes park maintenance, by the way. Parks Department has, their maintenance division works out of this facility in a separate building. They have perpendicular parking as well. And this is the point here, if you can see, this is the point at which the right-of-way reduces from 80 feet down to 60 feet. This is the turn. This is the mid-portion of South River Road, near the tank farms. I mentioned the truck queuing issue. We actually have signage which tells them to queue right here. Truck stacking only, so this is right-of-way. Here's an example of a truck doing just that, waiting to load at Shell across the street here. And a truck, tanker truck, exiting Buckeye, making a left turn. And a tanker truck exiting Shell near 15th Street, making a right turn.
Can I get a time check on how long this presentation is?
This is the--
We're very detail-oriented for a general plan level, transition plan discussion. I'm just trying to get sense how--
Okay. You prefer I move this along?
Yes. About eight slides total. We're going to get into the recommendations after these.
Yeah, I just finished the pictures and wrapping up the South River Road. Well, there's one more, I'm sorry. This is the northern part, and this is just an illustration of, this is a 60-foot portion of the right-of-way. This is how it might be striped in a 60-foot right-of-way. So this is an example of, to consider for that southern section, south of 15th Street. So these are the existing conditions on the left. This is how we had visited and envisioned it in the future. How do we get there? These are the recommendations. Preliminary recommendations is outlined in the staff report. The immediate safety needs related to traffic. And we recommend that we meet individually with the property owners, with exhibits that show the right-of-way and show their encroachments, and work with them to find solutions. We recommend additional survey work on South River Road to accomplish, to produce those exhibits, as well as surveying the levee prism, for the reasons I discussed earlier, related to alignment. And we'd like the council really to consider the configuration of South River Road. There's a lot of options here. We could go with an interim improvement project. We could hold out and go straight to an ultimate configuration. We have the issue of the traffic model update coming up, weighing that against the urban standards that are being implemented in the Bridge District. And finally, I'd like to hear your thoughts on entitlement carve-out for the property owners on South River Road, as that's a property value issue, and which will be important in the transition effort. So I can pause here, Mr. Mayor, and we can talk about South River Road, or I can power through and finish this up and--
Why don't we power through? Turbo.
Turbo, all right. Corporation Yard, it's old, it's inefficient, it's obsolete. It includes the old wastewater treatment plant facilities, and we recommend that we relocate ourselves as a pilot project and open up a key development site in Pioneer Bluff. Existing conditions on the left, we envision this as a development site that's cleaned up and supporting the vision for mixed-use development on the river. How do we get there? We ask for your affirmation that the corporation yard is a top priority in the Pioneer Bluff transition, including a new corp yard facility in the city's long-term capital improvement plan, pursuit of an acquisition site. I should point out that the city did purchase a relocation site in 2006, when there was a previous effort to relocate the corporation yard. We own that today. It's no longer considered an appropriate site for a corporation yard. Engaging a function or design, a process-oriented consultant to frame a budget for the, and design for the new corp yard facility, and consider financing options for the new facility, as well as for cleanup of the existing property. And finally, the tank farms. Don't need to spend much time explaining why we need to relocate these. One issue we'd like you to consider tonight is the first issue on the existing conditions, and that is the Buckeye facility is currently permitted by a use permit to bring in ethanol by rail. That use permit expires at the end of the year, and the recommendation is that that use permit is not renewed. These are outdated, old facilities with groundwater and soil contamination, and in an environment that's growing increasingly untenable for tank farm operations. So finally, the recommendations, my last slide. Affirm that tank farm relocation is a top priority. Again, no new or renewed use permits for rail in Pioneer Bluff. And explore potential relocation sites with kind of a fresh approach, not only looking at the port. We have the port property that's been reserved and is available for the tank farms. But we've had meetings with both Shell and Buckeye, and conversations about regional locations as well, that might be outside of West Sacramento and preferable to them. We need to conduct additional environmental investigation. And finally, the amortization study is a potential tool to expedite facilitate tank farm relocation. So--
All right, Mr. Dought. All right, questions first? Mr. Mayor, President Johansson?
A couple of questions. On this, when you were developing these recommendations and with this report, did you, I mean, have you met with the property owners during this process, or is it going to be after you have direction from us?
Well, we, a little of both. We've met with some of the property owners, including Shell and Buckeye. Mr. Ramus, we've had early conversations with him.
Clark Pacific, have you--
Clark Pacific, that's, we haven't met with them specifically or directly, but the thought is, once the Fix Fifty thing kind of cools down, then we can engage our traffic division and really focus on those encroachments and start those conversations.
But I think we've identified the issues we laid out in the staff report as really those critical early items that we would like the council's feedback and direction on before we start to meet with property owners, because they are key drivers of the process.
All right. Yeah, I think they're good directions. Now, on the traffic signals, you know, one of the things we worked for years was to get synchronization on Jefferson. And now we're looking at putting two additional traffic signals here, once we have the bridge open. So we're going to have a lot of people that are going to be commuting, and of course, that's where the problem is with the interaction of trucks and commuter vehicles. I'm assuming that those will be synchronized as well for the ins and outs during commute time?
You know, I don't believe so. I'm not the right person to ask, but my understanding is that those signals are triggered by the property owners, and as their employees exit their parking lots, they'll be given the green light. And that's my understanding, but I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer on--
Yeah, that will be a problem.
Right.
That's kind of a common complaint we get all over town, signals that are tripped when they shouldn't be tripped. But you have to work that out. And the last issue on the use of rail cars for ethanol, I just want to be sure we're not creating a problem by doing that. I'm not sure if we reduce the ability to bring in ethanol by rail, won't it come in by some other means?
Truck.
And so it'd be exchanging rail for a truck?
Correct.
And so what does that do to the, I mean, it seems like it's a balance--
Yeah, so, well, it's an issue we looked closely at. There's, the Buckeye permit is for six rail cars per day. That equates to about 24 trucks per day. And so if they maximize that use permit, or the volumes that are allowed by that use permit, and you translate that into truck activity, that's about 24 trucks a day. So it's a percentage of their total fuel. It's a blend, so it's, we've estimated a 15% to 18% increase in trucking volumes for Buckeye.
But that's, I was going to say, that's balanced with the current effect of the intersection being blocked by trains. We know that's been an issue in the past for both traffic circulation, but also public safety, getting through that intersection. So in terms of looking at it from a purely traffic standpoint, that's the balance that we're looking at. I think there's a bigger issue, though, about the appropriateness of rail delivery and facilitating the operation there when it's a, you know, it's a discretionary use, and it's a, the use permit, and it's a non-conforming use, that we're hoping to facilitate a relocation to either the port or another location.
Yeah, are we going to receive some kind of analysis on the balancing that's going on here?
The balancing?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, you know, if there's more trucks going on in an area that's heavily commuted, you know, what does that do to traffic patterns versus blockage of 15th Street or whatever? And what is the, you know, least impact on both business and the people?
Right, well, yeah, so we've done some preliminary analysis there. I mean, the traffic model update, we'll, I'm sure, look at that as well. But to that 15th Street crossing issue, much of the downtime, the crossing arms being down, is related to those six rail cars switching in and out of Buckeye. There's additional crossing there for traffic two points west, but there's a lot of back and forth there to get those six cars in and out on a daily basis. So, you know, we've done the percentage analysis of the increase in trucking versus kind of a qualitative analysis.
I think this is going to be one of the greatest challenges the city council has ever faced. We've, our work in Southport, which was raw farmland, or in the Riverpoint Center, which was raw land. In the Bridge District, the decline of which occurred before we were ready to do major development, so it was almost entirely, essentially reclaimed, recycled land. The rivers, largely the same thing. Our biggest success, even West Capitol Avenue, we haven't, we did not adjust our West Capitol Avenue plan really in any significant way, based on what the motel across the street thought, or the motel two doors down. We were not trying to adapt our vision to the property, to incumbent property owners. So we've never really done this before. And I know our inclina, I hope we resist the urge to become like a school board and start getting to every detail. I will want to, I know it. But I also know we won't succeed if we tell you we want to create, if we essentially get a postcard from 30 years from now, and they say, here's the amazing waterfront that you've created in this Pioneer Bluff area. If that's what we want to see happen, and then we say to you each week, now, is that property owner happy, and that property owner happy, and that property owner happy? We're not disrupting them in any way, are we? We will not get there. It's not possible to achieve that level of vision that we articulate. Well, I didn't do it. The city council, you know, at the very early stages, in our first general plan articulated for this area, that we have only enhanced since that time in our subsequent planning work. That's not possible to achieve in very incremental steps. If we build this, if we design and build the major circulation facility here, South River Road, or whatever, Riverfront, all based on dealing with Buckeye here, and this company over here, and that company over there, their current needs, and make it so that we provide no disruption whatsoever, we will never get to that outcome. And it is a balancing act, but it's also a lot of negotiation, and a lot of bluffing, and a lot of hubris on all sides. I mean, this is the nature of this sort of work. And so if we try to manage that entirely from here, despite, you know, because we will want to, and we will be hearing from all these folks, we will get a very different result than we've gotten in all of our big successes. I'm not saying it's a bad, you know, it's bad, but we can't assume that if everything in the world stays the same except the way we act, that we're going to get the same dramatic, transformative, wondrous outcomes that West Sac has become widely known for. So I'm struggling with it, because I want greatness in this area. I think that's what the people of our community want. When we did, I went to the Mayor's Institute on City Design 10, 12 years ago, took this area, each mayor's invited to bring, you know, one opportunity area, and I took this one, and it was the hottest one in the whole country. It was, what you have there is incredible, it's amazing. The doctoral students that were in there, not the doctoral students, the city planning students that were in there said, we want to do this as our culminating project. They did, I'm sure you've seen their work. It is, this is a deeply inspiring place for our community and for the region, but only if we get it right. And so it's not that we run roughshod over everybody that's already there, but we, to me, really have to keep our eye on the end zone, as we're dealing with this, with these issues. And recognize that we announced to all the property owners from the very, from the beginning of the city, essentially, this is what is going to be happening. Here's your 10-year notice, your 15-year notice, and now it's 27 years later. We've been very, very transparent about where we're headed, and about the mechanisms to accomplish that. We've met with the tank farms, just as an example, because they're the most extreme in this regard. Our policies have all made this very clear. We've met with them 1,000 times. It's, look, when the road gets done, that's, forget amortization and everything else, when the road gets done, it's going to change everything. So you might want to think about moving before the road gets done. Well, the road's going to get done. And so we, that's not a surprise, right? That's not some unexpected thing, that the poor tank farm is going to have to deal with. That is exactly the scenario that we have, both cities have laid out for them for at least, for at least the 16 years that I've been in this chair. So I think we need to be, you know, we need to really pay attention to the interests of the city as a whole, and to the posterity of the city as we're dealing with these individual issues. The Clark Pacific one is, it's a good example. I'm supportive of those signals in the Clark Pacific instance, because of the work we've already done with them. But I do hope, as we do that work, that we don't allow those, that we think of those signals as essentially long-term interim uses. For as long as Clark wants to be there, I'm supportive of having those signals there. I think we need to deal with the synchronization issue. But I don't want the, I don't want the land uses on the other side to be built with an expectation that there will always be a signal there, because this is not supposed to be that. And to have, you know, if we were to design Jefferson entirely around a single use forever, it's a mistake. And so we need to, we need to build an interim measure, be prepared to change it later on. We won't get people to move over from Jefferson to this alignment, which is what we want, and that's what we promised with the bridge and with our application for the road. That will not happen if we have too many signals that are triggered by a truck every five seconds. That will, I will say, I'll just drive on Jefferson again. That was the whole point of this. So if somebody says, well, look, I've always parked perpendicular to the street, and it's a big hassle if you make me change, keep in mind that the trade-off for that is causing the street to not function any longer for its bigger purposes, for the thousands of people in our community that want to use it to get, you know, to move around, or to be able to visit the waterfront itself. So I just, I really want to stay up here on these issues. The transit, so the transition plan really ought to be a transition, and not, and not an adaptation plan right now. The other dimension of that is, a lot of the funding sources are demanding this anyway, right? So if we're going to go for regional or federal funds for the actual, for the Riverfront, or South River, whatever we're going to be calling it, a lot of, those mostly require complete streets approaches. So they will not allow us to use the picture that you showed us, that has like a five-inch bike lane, and then, you know, four lanes of traffic and nothing else? I mean, it's not, that's not, I mean, that's not, those streets don't get built anymore with those kind of funding sources. And so it shouldn't seem like a sort of an adapted industrial area that is unfriendly, as unfriendly as Jefferson can be, in many of its stretches to pedestrians and cyclists. So the queuing is a good example. For the tank farms, I mean, that's an area we have, we gave notice years and years and years ago. And if there are queues of trucks in the right-of-way or on the street that are competing traffic, people will not use that alignment. So we need to, we need to be clear about that. And the other piece I want to mention is just our site. I want to, I do want to develop, but I also want you to be careful about writing it for development too quickly. I definitely, what I don't want it, I'm not interested in trading it with any of the other, with any of the property owners, because I can already see this, I've seen this story before, where property owners, oh, sure, I'll give up my four perpendicular-- would say, "Oh, sure, I'll give up my four perpendicular spaces in exchange for your, your open development site." No. Now, that is, it's hard to imagine, maybe the, the Confluence property, but it's hard to imagine, and, and that and Stone Lock is being two of the most amazing river properties in the region. And so, it, that's not, for me, it is not on the table for, for a trade, or for greasing a transaction in the Pioneer Bluffs with any of the industrial property owners. That is to be, that is to be the anchor of the magic of this district. And so, that, if, if we can deliver that soon, so it sets the right tone, I'm all for it. But I don't want, I'm not in a hurry to get a project, and particularly a project that's just part of an overall transaction sheet, in order to make the rest of the piece of it, the, the piece of it move. I wanna support these companies. I wanna support these businesses, particularly the ones that are, you know, locally owned and operate, employ a lot of people. At the same time, we have to pay attention to the, to the overall city, to the aspiration that's been laid on our general plan, and what this is gonna be for the, you know, for, for the, for the rest of our future. Sorry, Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I agree with a lot, a lot of what you said. I do have some, I, I think you're right. I think that we have to lay out this, this process, and I think you've done, Rick, is, is a great job starting to lay out some recommendations for us, and, and pointing us a path towards this transition plan. And I think, and I think you're, to your point, keeping it at a level where you can stay focused on the end zone, not get caught up in all the minutia that is, is going to be the pain points between us and the property owners and businesses along the corridor is, is important. And, and so, you know, hopefully, and I think it's the case, I'm, I'm optimistic, that the property owners get, get that. And they want, they wanna get there, too. They need a path out, too. And we're gonna have to help them find that. I know in talking with at least one property, business owner in Clark Pacific, you know, they, you know, that, that is important to them, being a local, local owned company is important to them. So, we have to find a way through this process and get into where we wanna go without, without the loss of integrity of that vision, you know, enroll them into that, and making sure it's a win-win somehow for everyone without sacrificing that. On, on some specific issues, I'm gonna go to the tank farms, which is probably the, the, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, and whatever you wanna call it, in the room. So, this is where I'm, I'm, this, you know, I, I remember one of my first planning commission meetings, I think, that was the, the, the extension of a, of a unconforming, the permit to keep, the condition use permit to keep moving forward with them, because nothing was in sight. And, you know, they, they ran a business, and it's, they're running a business, and we, and to your point, they've been noticed. But where, where are we, I mean, the only way this can work is by getting to some critical mass where the other side of the river, which has tank farms as well, they're motivated to, to move. Or has, has any progress been made? Have we checked in with Sacramento? Are we having any, the city of Sacramento, have we made any?
I, I would actually like to kinda clarify that, because I, I think that's, that was the, the paradigm of the, the Sacport project. It was a consolidation of the tank farms in one location.
Right.
I think what we found in talking to both Shell and Buckeye, and doing our own, you know, due diligence of, of that issue in, in the areas, that their issues are very different. The Sacport project-
Their, their being the Southport versus the other side of the-
Buckeye versus Shell versus, I don't, I don't know about Chevron. We actually haven't checked in directly with them. But I think what we found is that we, we don't need to rely on the old idea of the Sacport project necessarily as tank farm relocation. Buckeye and Shell have unique business operations, unique needs. I would actually separate the two, and, and our strategy with relocation is, is really to address each one. There could be an opportunity, whether it's at the port, or at a regional location like Rick mentioned, to, to do the consolidation. But I, I wouldn't wanna get hung up on, on that as the, the ultimate outcome.
I, I, I'm not suggesting that we do, because I think you're, I, I suspect that, that that's where you're headed, is that by unbreaking us from that Sacport project kinda opens up a different paradigm. But, but I think you do have to, have to look at the, if we're taking a more regional approach, which was, what you, you talked about, how we might address that. Certainly Sacramento has, addressing Chevron, and what they've done with that group is, is important, because they share the Riverfront. We share a Riverfront master plan with them. And they're, and, and we have a proponent on the other side of the river who has openly embraced Broadway Bridge, which is a landing site where, about where that tank farm is. So, on the other side of the river. So, my, my point is, is that, you know, we might open up ourselves, maybe, to a different solution if we enroll them into it.
Right.
And, and, and granted, it's possibly three separate strategies to contain them. But, you know, one of them could be that catalytic one that kinda paves the road for the other two, or whatever the case.
That's right. And, and we are, we will be looking at that with the Chevron side in mind as well. The, the only point I was really making there is that we found that, that the needs and, and operations are very different. So, we're, we're approaching them from that, from that lens. But the, the ultimate outcome could be something that involves all three tank farms, two tank farms, maybe even only one. So-
Right.
Four, actually, yeah.
But, and that was, I appreciate that, and I, I applaud you for kinda unbreaking us from that paradigm and moving forward on it, because that, that is the one that will kind of, that will make that, to the mayor's point of kinda getting to that greatness. It can't go anywhere without that, having some strategy to get, get those folks to find another home. And whatever we can do to facilitate that, that'd be great. On, on South River Road, I'm kind of at, you know, I, I, you asked a question from us, the feedback on, do we wanna work on an interim solution? Do we wanna work on the permanent solution? And I'm not clear what the permanent solution is. And it's kinda going back to the, even the discussion we just had on Washington, on the Washington planning we're doing, neighborhood planning we're doing, and understanding, I know this is all zone Riverfront. We anticipate what they're, but again, I, I, what I'm, what I can, what I'm concerned about is, do we have, will we have enough information out of this study to know what, what that road will look like? To, to the mayor's point, we, we know that it'll require universal streets, and, and, and bike lanes, and all the things that a modern city, city street needs to have. But I'm also wanting to get, make progress. And again, if it's, I'm always, from an implementation perspective, and then, and, and in the spirit of progress, you know, is the best the enemy of the good, when you need to get moving on this. So, I'm kind of, I'm at a loss sort of where we are in this.
Yeah. I'll, I'll start. I mean, I think, I think the, the point we wanted to raise tonight, and, and just acknowledge for, at the council level, was that we have a constrained right-of-way. To some extent, we also have, you can think of it as potentially an ultimate right-of-way, depending on, you know, eighty feet is, is, is the majority of the road. To go beyond that is a, is a serious undertaking, because then you're, you're getting into right-of-way acquisitions and a much more complicated project. You do have that issue, though, with the sixty-foot sections. And so, really, tonight was about raising those issues, making the council aware of it. I think through the transition plan process, we're gonna be looking at, given the environment we're trying to create there, what is the, what are some potential solutions for the ultimate configuration of the road? So, maybe by the time we finish the plan later this year, we'll have some more clear direction on, and, and once the traffic model's done, and suggests what, what the capacity needs are of the, of the roadway, we'll have some options on the table for, here's what we could design, here's what it would mean for right-of-way acquisitions, and here's what it would mean for, for funding and funding solutions. So, that's really what, where we're trying to get to, is starting the, starting the conversation now with acknowledging the right-of-way constraints we have, and, and given that, what are the limitations on, on roadway size and streetscape?
Yeah, couple questions. Jeff, on the tank farms, are we going to run into some legal issues as far as cutting off rail within a year's period of time, or something like that?
You're talking about the Buckeye?
Yeah, Buckeye.
I don't think so. The use permit was originally granted, I wanna say, five, six years ago, something like that, seven. It's been extended at the request of Buckeye or Buckeyes' predecessor a couple of times. The last time, the Planning Commission extended it for a year. At that time, as I understand it, it was made fairly clear that this was the last extension that the Planning Commission intended to grant. There will be a process to go through in order to confirm the termination, if that's the direction that, that we decide to go, and if that's the direction the Planning Commission wants to go. I can't tell you that there won't be some opposition to that, but the, that has been the plan for an extended period of time.
Okay. Yeah, I think there's, there's a couple things. As far as the street itself, I don't think it's so much the people getting on and off work that work at the various places there, triggering some kind of device that allows for a, a stoplight to operate. I think it's more for the trucks. I think it's when the trucks come out to, probably go left on South River Road. That's where the safety issue of a bunch of people that live behind Nugget Market today, coming across the new bridge and having to stop, because all of a sudden you've got these trucks that need to, to get out into, into the road system. I think that that's really one of the things that's really necessary about a stoplight, and it's, it's for the safety of, of the people using their cars. The same thing probably holds true for Ramus and making the right-hand turn out of their yard to get onto the freeway access. So, but I mean, I think that, I think we do need the traffic lights. I think we probably need even more than that. We need some flashing, whatever it may be, ahead of time, prepare to stop or slow down. And then, I don't know what you do with the parking. That, that will be a very tricky issue, I think, because a number of people have parked, and they've parallel parked, and they're off the roadway, or whatever it is. But I, I, I don't know what the best solution is. I mean, you, these people are workers. They've worked for mainly, probably Clark Pacific, and, and-
We do have an idea that-
They've been here a long time. And, and I, I think that somehow or another, I, I don't know, I, I, I really don't know what you do as far as them parking, because there is limited space. There's limited space over there. I mean, it's-
If I may, one of the solutions we're looking at, this will involve the, the northern Stone Lock piece. So, it would be the area on the north side of the Barge Canal, after, after the bridge is complete, has potential to serve as an employee parking area.
Okay.
And then, there would be the employees walking along the, the, the west side of South River Road up to Clark Pacific. So, it's a short walk. They would have to accommodate the disabled spaces onsite, obviously. They, they probably do that already. But that's one, that's one solution. We're talking to our own Public Works Parks people about reconfiguring how they park at the city facilities as well, onsite.
Okay. The Corporation Yard, how, how do you tear down the wastewater treatment facility? Just bulldoze it down?
Well, you know, there's infrastructure twenty feet below grade-
Absolutely.
And so, that's a, that's a, that's a great question. And there was a cost estimate done in two thousand and six of fifteen point seven million dollars that took everything out.
Mm-hmm.
And so, depending on, you know, if a portion of that site is envisioned as a park, you might not need to, to do a twenty-foot depth of, of demolition. But, you know, if you, it's, it's a big excavation operation-
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff there.
And there's, there are interesting layers. We, we reviewed the, the environmental analysis. It's, it's, yeah, it's a big job.
And part of our analysis on that site specifically is looking at the, the residual land value that could be, you know, could be realized if we developed it. It obviously has a value. It's a Riverfront property. We haven't done the analysis fully to determine if, you know, our, our property has value based on all the demolition requirements. So, that, that's gonna be part of our process, as we look at the, the overall scheme of the courtyard relocation and demolition project.
We think there is residual land value, but we need to update those costs, absolutely.
Okay. And, and I guess, as far as the tank farm, I truly believe we're in for a legal fight. Maybe not in court-court, but probably through the legislative system. I, I don't know if these businesses are gonna go away quietly into the night. But, you know, it's, I don't know how many people that, between Clark Pacific and, and Ramus and Buckeye, I don't know how many people are employed in the city because of those three. I, I guess one of the things I would advise is that through our economic development person, Diane Richards, we, we at least find out how many, how many people we're going to affect, and see if there's a softer, gentler way. And, because you can, you can have an open piece of property. We'll just take the Corporation Yard, for instance, which is a long stretch. You can have a, a, a large vacant piece of property, and you may not ever have any use for it. I, I, nobody will buy it in order to put a condo on it, or whatever it is. I, I don't know. So, and the same thing goes for the tank yard, or tank farms. You can wipe 'em out, you know, I guess. But I don't know if the land's gonna be sold. I don't know if it's going to have enough, enough economic interest there to make it a viable business for somebody to invest in. I, I, I truly don't know. I mean, I think that the land can be transitioned, but I think it's up to the owners of the land to transition that. And if they do it, they will make sure that they have investors to invest in whatever kind of endeavor they want to do.
I, I actually, I agree. I just, I, I, because we don't have the resources to go move people anywhere. I'm, I'm curious about, you know, what the amortization study's gonna show. But I don't actually, I'm, I'm not drawn to that approach anyway. But, but it does require that we not bend over backwards and adapt everything that we do to every existing pattern of use of the existing landowners, which is what, what I've, I, I wanna make sure we avoid that, that, "Oh, well, right now there's four, and we cannot have, you know, we cannot even take one space away from perpendicular parking. We cannot do that. And so, let's redesign our whole road system around that. We cannot do that." And we need to make the changes we need to make that are in the interest, interest of the community. In, frankly, in the same way that we have done with levy projects, that where we've had to say to property owners that aren't as big and powerful as these, but they've, we've had to say, "This is what, this is what is necessary for the, for the whole community." The difference here is that these property owners are not, they don't lose, they win either way, right? Because the, I mean, the value of all of these properties is, I mean, there's been, there has been a lot of analysis done for this. We had to do it for several of our applications as well. The value of these properties, as this, as this transition occurs, is gonna go significantly up. So, the incentives to move and the, push and pull are gonna get stronger and stronger and stronger. We don't need to. I mean, Semex is not out of business. Semex has moved, and they're in a, you know, a lovely new, bigger facility. There are just as many people as employed as before, if not more, and they're not on the waterfront anymore. They're happy. And others will be in the same, in the same position. So, so, yes, it's, we wanna make sure that they, that, you know, that, that Clark Pacific is, is the, is probably the most direct example. Ramus was a good one, too, that they don't go out of business, you know, to the extent that we can avoid that, while they are transitioning to, to the extent that that makes sense. But we also, they have to adapt, too, right? They have to meet us halfway. And so, it cannot simply be, we will, we will change everything that we do in order to adapt everything, practice that they currently have. That will not work. There's gonna have to be adaptation on both sides, recognizing that long-term value, and then some- and then some uses are going to have to go altogether. But I, we sometimes say this cannot work unless the tanks move or something like that. I don't believe that. I don't believe there's any single use in a mile-long district that is the determinant of the success of the rest of the district. Yes, over the long period, will the whole district develop out to what our emerging general plan vision is if the tank farms are still there or if Clark Pacific is still in its place? No, because those are both large uses. But there's a whole lot of other space in that district that can redevelop. And no, a preschool will not be next to the tank farm, and there won't be an elementary school right next to Clark Pacific's yard. But there's a lot of other uses out there that can be transitional in the, in the rest of the footprint. And so, while we should continue to work towards those ends of relocation, I don't think we should adopt the stance that nothing will happen unless those do. That's, one, that gives a lot of lever, negotiating leverage to the tanks. And second, I just don't think it's true. And it's not, that's not the record of urban redevelopment anywhere else in the country. Urban redevelopment happens around existing compatible uses. It doesn't wait for everything to disappear before it happens, and we ought to proceed that way, too. Mayor President Johansson?
Yeah, no, I totally agree. In fact, it just harks the example of Vancouver, Granville Island, there you've got an active cement factory right in the middle of a community and it works, you know, but it is an area in transition. But one of the things that I just want to touch briefly on is the levy situation and the setback issue there because with that impact, some of the current property owners, what is, I mean, there's not really, it's all pretty built up there in terms of, there's no levies really, but there will be some setbacks like we have in the.
Right. So, we do need to do additional survey work, the same as we did in the Bridge District. There's a theoretical levy. It's a bluff, but there will be a prism identified that very well could, there could be encroachments within that prism that, you know, we'll have to come up with solutions long-term to, I mean, certainly for any new use, we'll have to stay outside the levy prism and the development.
But existing uses that would possibly be within that prism?
It appears that there may be some encroachments. We just won't know until we complete that survey work, which is one of the recommended.
Yeah. And I'll just add to that, next month, you'll see as part of the CIP, it'll be an item requesting an authorization related to Pioneer Bluff. And so, a lot of the recommendations that are contained in the report tonight, with that item going forward, with CIP, we'll be allocating funding towards things like a levy prism analysis and get those things going in the short term.
Mr. Kristof?
One real quick, I don't think I answered one of your questions. I would like to see if we can move the Corporation Yard. I mean, I think that that's, that really does make some sense, but I have no idea what you do with the infrastructure that's under that property because it is substantial. There's a lot of stuff under there.
All right. Do you have sufficient feedback? All right. Thank you. Then Council Calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking forward to seeing all of you Saturday night at the Learning Ladder fundraiser at the Black Box Theater. There'd be blues in the black box. The time that it actually opens is 7:00 PM. It's, there was an error on the calendar here. On the 21st, the Public Works Department is going to be celebrating National Public Works Week. Everybody's invited to a barbecue at South River Road that begins at 11:30. And that evening, we have the State of the City, which the doors open at 5:30 with the dinner program to begin at 7:00. Missing from your calendar is on the, on the 28th of this month is the Yellow Leaders Forum, and that's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and that's going to be at the Department of Social Services in the city of Woodland. And the topic for that night is going to be homelessness in the county. And then finally, on June 18th, not yet on your calendar, is a Streetcar Steering Committee meeting at 11 o'clock. And I just wanted to also remind the council on June 6th that we're having the renaming dedication of the water treatment plant to the George Kristof Water Treatment Plant. That'll be at 10 o'clock out at the plant.
Any questions on the calendar? And seeing none, City Manager reports.
I'm here. Council members, Councilman Ledesma talked a little bit about Fix 50. Caltrans now reports that the eastbound work will be completed. They anticipate it'll be completed by Friday afternoon. We'll shut down our traffic officers at the intersections as of today. We have not seen the need to have them out there, so we'll suspend that and continue to monitor the cameras and keep staff on call for that Fix 50 project. But we are, completed that, and thanks to Denex Ambia, who's here, really played a great leadership role in that effort with PD and Fire. Also, from Public Works on the water conservation effort, the 20% goal, to date, we're at 24% reduction in water consumption in the city. That's January through May 13th. So, that's a 24% reduction on a voluntary basis.
Marty, do you know, is that industrial and residential or?
That's citywide.
Citywide, good. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, are there questions on the City Manager Report? City Attorney Report? Staff Directional for members of the council? We have no future agenda requests. Is there motion to adjourn? Move by Mayor President Johansson, second by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed during non-motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.